Good evening and welcome to the Market City Commission Meeting for Monday, July 11th, 2011. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, could you please call roll?
Yes, Your Honor, Commissioner De Pietro.
Here.
Commissioner Neme.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
Commissioner St. Ange.
Here.
Commissioner Snyder.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse.
Here.
And Mayor Kivola.
Here.
Any agenda changes? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to add an item, a request by the Federal District Court to waive the fee at the Prescott Isle Van Shell for holding a naturalization event at the Van Shell. And the date would be August 12th, 2011.
Okay, do we have support to add that? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support that.
Okay. Any other changes? Seeing none, I look for a motion to approve the agenda. Commissioner Ryan?
Will the agenda be approved as revised?
We have support. Commissioner Snyder? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Okay, I've got just a couple announcements here. First up, on this coming Thursday, the 14th, there's an open house at Lakeview Arena regarding the five-year Recreation Master Plan update for the City of Marquette. This is really an important document for the city as we go ahead in the coming years and plan what we have and how we utilize what we have in terms of recreation. And, you know, we're blessed to have an abundant number of parks and fields and resources, and this plan will help steer the future for the city. So if you have an interest in this, I would ask that you please attend. There's an open house, open to the public from 3:00 to 5:00, just to mingle and talk and see what's out there for resources. And then from 6:00 to 8:00, there will be a presentation. So again, this is Thursday, the 14th, at the Lakeview Arena Citizens Forum. We've got a handful of openings on boards and committees, and I'm going to rattle off a few of them real quick. The Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, we have two openings. The City of Marquette Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, we have three openings. And this is kind of a critical one for us. So if there's anyone out there that has interest in this, we've got three openings, and we've got some pretty important stuff going on in the next couple of years with this board. And what we'd really hate to see is have a board, you know, not be able to have a quorum on some of these important things. So if there's any interest at all, you can certainly contact any of the commissioners or the city manager's office for a little background on what's involved and when meeting times are. A few others here, Investment Advisory Board has an opening. Local Officers Compensation Commission has two openings. Parks and Rec Advisory Board, one opening. Parks and Rec Advisory Board for Market Schools Rep, one opening. Peter White Public Library Board of Trustees, one opening. Police Fire Pension Board, one opening. Prescott Isle Park Advisory Committee, three openings. And the Sister City Advisory Committee has two openings. So that's it for my announcements. Next up, I'm going to ask Police Chief Mike Angeli if he could join me at the lecturn with John Waldo, who is here. John, I'm going to let you have the floor, and go ahead.
Awesome. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Chief Angeli, I'm here to present, Chief Angeli, a Patriot Award. This award is from supportive employers. They're critical to maintaining the strength and readiness of our National Garden Reserve units. The Patriot Award recognizes deserving employers who support and goodwill, are important to retaining highly skilled and qualified members of the Garden Reserve. The City of Marquette, Chief Angeli are perfect examples of these employers that support not only their employees as guard members and reserve members, but also promotes goodwill towards members of the Garden Reserve and the community as well. So it was not much of a decision for me to make to put the chief in and put the city in for this award. And today, I'm here to happily present this award to Chief Angeli.
It's quite surprising, but I hired you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You bet. Thank you. How we kept that from Mike, I don't know. But thank you again, John. Okay, while I'm up here, next we've got recognition of outgoing members. So I know April Lindela is here, Gail LaJoy, and I don't think I saw Jim Dunn here. If April and Gail could come on up? April Lindela and Gail LaJoy have both been outstanding members of our Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. So on behalf of the city, I'd like to thank you both for the donation of your time and your energies towards helping. When you look at where the city's gone in the last 10 or 15 years in the arts and culture area, it's amazing. And it's something that's really helped put Marquette on the map for the community that it is. So I've got a certificate of appreciation presented to April Lindela for her volunteer effort on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Thank you for your hard work and dedication in serving the citizens of this community. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
You bet. And I've got the same for Gail LaJoy, for volunteer efforts on the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee. Thank you again for your hard work and dedication.
Well, you're welcome. Thank you.
You bet. And don't leave yet. We've got lovely parting gifts. We have for each of you a T-shirt, a pen, and a City of Marquette pin to wear proudly. So.
Thank you.
Very good.
You bet. So.
Thank you.
There you go.
You know, I heard if you get three of these, there's a check. So I might have to get on another committee.
You heard me rattle off the opening. So we'll pick one for you. Thank you again. And while I'm up here, we will welcome our newest member, Sally Davis Campana. Sally, if you could please come on up. You've got your speech ready? All right. Sally is our newest member of the Harbor Advisory Committee, and Sally brings an extensive background in crewing, which is something I know you're very passionate about. So you're going to really add to an already very impressive group. So on behalf of the city, I'm going to give you a pen and a pin. You don't get the T-shirt till you're done.
Okay. But this is like take notes with, huh?
That's what you take notes with.
Okay, thank you. I'm very much looking forward to this.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right. Next up, Commissioners, we're still on boards and committees. We have a reappointment. We've got James Compton, Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board, for a term ending 2/114. Do we have a motion to approve, Jim? Commissioner Stonehouse?
I move to appoint James Compton to the Market Area Wastewater Treatment Advisory Board for a term ending 2/0114.
Do we have support? Commissioner Snyder? Supports. Commissioner Stonehouse, any comments?
Only good man, and we're really happy to see him serving.
All right. Commissioner Snyder?
Nothing additional.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Next up, we've got appointments. We've got Ann Stark, Arts and Culture Advisory Committee, for a term ending 6/114. And Carrie Gottlieb, Parks and Rec Advisory Committee, for a term ending 1/2913. Do we have a motion? We can take these one at a time or do them as a slate? Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we appoint Ann Stark to the Arts and Culture Advisory Committee for a term ending June 1st, 2014, and Carrie Gottlieb to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board for a term ending January, or January 29th, 2013.
All right. Do we have support? Commissioner De Pietro supports. Any additional comments? Commissioner Neme?
Just like to thank these citizens for being willing to serve their city.
Commissioner De Pietro?
Thank these two individuals for serving. Thank you.
Any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right. Next up is appointments to the Charter Review Working Group for a term ending 8/3011. And as I read these names off, just kind of think back and think about the history for the last quite a few years in the city, and there's pretty prominent names here. So Thomas Baldini, Thomas Brown, M. Cameron Howes, Robert Kulasek, J. Michael Coyne, Christine Pasola, Thomas Tourville, Connie Mizuki, Buzz Barabee, and Taylor Clip. Pretty impressive people that I trust with something as valuable as our charter. So do we have a motion to approve the slate of candidates? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we approve the slate of candidates for this very limited term until August 30th, 11.
Excellent. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will second that strongly.
Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
Just very pleased that we had this group be willing to step forward to help us go to the next phase in this project.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Certainly a stellar group, and I look forward to seeing their recommendations.
Any other comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public comment. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Citizens may reserve time to speak on agenda items. This may result in the item being moved up on the agenda at the mayor's discretion. Again, please, please give your name and physical address for the record.
Nina Wireittner, and I live at 167 Lakewood Lane, and I'd like to reserve some time to speak just briefly at the Skate Plaza section. And can I reserve time for the other two members of my group as well?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, James Gallant, Scandia, 538 Yama Road. And I'd like to ask you to please reconsider your ordinance that you passed last week with the Planning Commission, because it is directly contradicts the Chapter 7 of the Now Charter, which says that "all valid ordinances shall continue in full force and effect until repealed or amended, provided, however, that if any such ordinance provides for the appointment of, by the mayor, of any officer or member of a board or commission, other than Peter White Library, future appointments shall be made by the commission." This is in direct conflict with the Now Charter to have the mayor appointing all the boards and committees. I don't know. I guess we have an attorney here now. I've been in contact with the Attorney, the State's Attorney General's Office, and it seems the city did not contact the Attorney General's Office. You have to get, your charter has to be approved by the governor and the attorney general, and they recommend that you work with them. And the whole time, they said you've not contacted them. And they said that this little working group thing, that you have like a task force thing, may very well be illegal because it contravenes the election laws. A city charter needs to be reviewed, and it has to be elected. The commissioners to the charter review commission are elected by the people. You don't even know if these people want this to be even reviewed yet. You have to find out if they want it reviewed first through an election, and then you elect a charter commission. This is 1950 annual report. It says, "On January 16th, the commission declares a special election to vote whether or not the city charter should be revised. And then in March, the city votes in favor of charter revision and elected members to the charter commission." That is the process. Detroit is in the middle of it. And I am in contact with the Attorney General's Office, and we have an attorney here. Maybe you should ask her. She has been appointed as the Assistant City Attorney. I don't know where she comes from, but she is here. And I am preparing with the help of the Attorney Greedments Commission, with a complaint with the Attorney Greedments Commission, saying that these folks are not telling you what the actual standard is here. And then you're just going to appoint your committees and the mayor, do the same thing over and over, and have them, what, rewrite the charter to say that what you're doing is right? And then just say, well, here, how about you just vote on this and say everything's okay? Well, these people need to be elected, and they're supposed to be elected. And this is, I don't know where this all came from, but you slipped her right in. You slipped her right in. And this, I don't know. I guess it's just par for the course. And the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission issue also, because that isn't, remember, Member Ryan said, well, wait a minute, we've got an appointment by the mayor, but, you know, with what, concurrence of the board. That's not what the charter says. They didn't inform you of what the charter says on the subject, and then you're just going to go do it anyways.
Time's up, sir.
I would encourage the people of the city to do an initiatory.
Mr. Guo, time's up.
Petition for the charter so that you cannot.
Sir, have a seat, please. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Frank Jeff Verito, 350 East Rids, to speak on item three. These are my opinions. Your June 27th meeting presented more examples of how you simply don't get it, as the second man up admitted in those words, when his idea of opening the new boardwalk to fireworks viewing was challenged. Even after safety concerns were raised, he and the nearest member proposed subjecting our taxpayers to foolish liability. Not once in your discussion did anyone mention the possibility of wind, especially being the boardwalk is east of a fully unearthed construction site at a location that's susceptible to west winds. Watching at home or in the audience, unable to interject, is often pure torture as we watch your sticky wheels trying to turn, wondering if common sense might prevail. The fact that the chair knew well enough to bail you out isn't itself amazing, and no one will argue that we were treated to a truly sensational firework show. Another of your failures to zero in on key issues occurred during your comments on the beach. Dogs and cigarette butts are not the main problem. In fact, the vast majority of dogs are well behaved. Feces and cigarette butts are littered all over town, not just the lakefront, and they can be removed easily, unlike your unsightly buoys, signage, flagpoles, and future storage lockers. You're repeatedly told that lots of money is being spent where it's not needed, yet much of the time, Pitnik Rocks is still not guarded. Have the patrol officer stay there. Nice as he seems, he's out of place between Pitnik Rocks and McCarty's Cove, where lifeguards now adequately patrol. Sunday, they cleared the water of bathers on account of lightning, 45 minutes after the radar showed that the threat had already passed. Our main issue is not dogs, but is the demise of the visual quality. The new buoys north of McCarty's receive the most complaints as they detract from what was formerly pristine. You don't know because you're not down there. Zero of seven members show concern for natural amenities, which the majority of us hold dear, the very essence of why we live here. You frown upon dog feces while you leave people with inadequate bathroom accommodations. One of the two McCarty's stalls has been closed all season, inconveniencing hundreds of people and forcing us to use the lake. We're human beings. We're not like every one of you who consistently presides here for hours without ever having to use the bathroom, which is very strange. Over the past 12 years, this board has usually sat one member or another who's acted in behalf of the common citizen. Not anymore. You have the appearance of working well together because you're all basically the same person. This, along with your disregard of nature, is unhealthy for the public, as the examples on record will attest.
Thank you, Mr. Veritol. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Good evening. You're in Malankin 8 Market Drive. I guess we need to contact the DEQ and the DNR for an individual polluting our fine lake in our community. With that said, I just want to say thank you for the entire city and city commission for, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Fourth of July Committee, making things really happen behind the scenes that we had a few complications, but those were all taken care of nicely. And I want to thank everybody involved behind the scenes with the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak or reserve time to speak on an agenda item?
Governor, I'm the mayor. This is not on an agenda item, but can I still make a public comment?
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, my name is Chris Clements, 913 Champion Street.
Thank you.
I would like to say to anybody that lives in South Marquette, you're free to contact me. Five years ago, or six years ago, we came down here when the landing group first got their okay on Founder's Landing. Talking about the history of people in Marquette, I know at one of those meetings, we had at least 50 residents from South Marquette area. One of those residents was Mrs. Inch, which is a very, a very nice woman that has lived in South Marquette. There are people in South Marquette, those opinions have not been respected. They asked for, to preserve their view. On Palm Street, that building is atrocious as far as preserving anybody's view. The heights of what was told the citizens of Marquette have over exceeded what was supposed to be built there. These people came here, they're elderly in age, they came and stated an opinion, and it was totally disregarded in what they had to say. It's been thrown to the wayside. I'm asking the commission to reconsider what's really going on down there. I'm wondering if the people on Palm Street should have civil action. I also would like to say that Mrs. De Frey's comment in the editorial last, this past Sunday, was very much true to what we've been going through in Marquette. I am glad I have to come here, year after year after year after year, to represent senior citizens or people that live in South Marquette, to see that our land is constructed properly and the views be preserved. And these contractors that say, no, I'm using green material. And when I came here five years ago, I said, I didn't want to see any vinyl. Okay, you've got green construction board. But why isn't that green construction board that they use on the lakeside? Why is that construction board that looks like vinyl on our side? And as far as I'm concerned, the old people in Marquette, South Marquette, or anybody that enjoys the view down there, Dorsey's 40, Mr. Dorsey's right on, Champion, these people have been there and they're respected. These people voted you in. These people have worked for this city and have paid taxes all their lives in Marquette. So please respect these people and look at your videos five years ago and what they had asked you to do for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address the commission? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda. City Clerk, do you want to read through the items, please?
Yes, Your Honor. Item A, approve the minutes of the June 27, 2011 Commission Meeting. Item B, approve the total bills payable in the amount of $508,209.72. Item C, adopt a resolution recognizing the Niqamanan Trail Network Council as a nonprofit organization operating in the community for the purpose of obtaining a charitable gaming license and authorize the clerk to sign the resolution. Item D, approve the purchase of 33 Armor Express Halo Level 2 NIJ06 Certified NIJ Model HLO-D-2 Bullet-Resistant vests from CMP distributors in the amount of $19,998, being low bid meeting specifications. And last-minute wording change from the developer on this last item due to the need for a technical change in the statement as it would be adopted by the commission. Item E, then, would be concur with the Planning Commission's recommendation and approve the final preliminary plat of Premus Peak Number 2 as amended.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Veritol, you asked to speak on this item? On three? No. Oh, maybe I've got a different agenda here. Okay. I've got an older one that changed the numbering. Sorry. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner Ryan?
I would like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with one exception, and that would be that we authorize payment of the bills in the amount of $507,801.52, removing $408.20, which were expenses paid for to commissioners. This will allow all commissioners to vote on this motion.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
None.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And then Commissioner Ryan, do you want to follow that up?
I move we approve payment of expenses to, for Commissioners Snyder and De Pietro in the amount of $408.20.
Okay. Do we have support? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Support for the motion.
We have support. Motion and support. Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
These are expenses incurred in connection with a conference that was authorized by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Nothing further. Thank you.
All right. And Commissioner De Pietro and Snyder, is it your intent to abstain then on this? Okay. All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? And we have two abstentions, Commissioner De Pietro and Snyder. Thank you, Don. All right. Next up is Unfinished Business Report and Recommendation from the City Manager Regarding Marquette Skateboard Plaza Funding. City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, since 2006, the city commission has supported the Market Area Skate Plaza Committee's interest in building a skate plaza in Marquette. The commission pledged a one-to-two general fund match up to a total of $75,000, and identified a portion of Lakeview Arena property as the site for the skate plaza. The pledge expired on June 30th, 2011, and matching funds were not included in the FY 1112 budget. Therefore, a budget adjustment will be required if the commission chooses to reaffirm support. Fiscal effect, a fiscal year 1112 general fund budget adjustment of up to $75,000 would be required to match funds for the skate plaza purposes. Specific budget sources have been identified, and authorization for release of matching funds will be forwarded to the commission pending identification of appropriate financial controls by the city manager and city attorney. Recommendation, approve a budget adjustment of up to $75,000 to be included in the FY 1112 budget to support building a skate plaza and reaffirm the city's earlier pledge to match $1 from the general fund for every $2 donated to the Market Area Skate Plaza Committee. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right. Nina, you had asked to speak? If you could have your two partners give their name and address also for the record.
You can give your name and address.
Stu Bradley, formerly resident of the city of Marquette, now live thirty-one miles southwest in Elie Township, still have very fond memories of the city and hope to speak in behalf of the skateboard plaza.
Stu, could I have your, the physical address?
Six-four-six-zero-zero, County Road five-eighty-one, Ishbaming.
Brad Jackson, nine oh-seven Spruce Street, Marquette.
Thank you.
Again, I'm Nina Wireitner and one sixty-seven Lakewood Lane, and Mayor Kivela and commissioners, I want to thank you again for continuing this conversation that we've been having for quite a few years. We gave a presentation, and I thank Brad Jackson for having done that at our, at the last meeting of the commission in June, to kind of update you and let you know it, what was going on with our efforts. And I guess we were a little surprised because we were thinking that it was going to be a time to vote on the matching funds, but, but I apologize, I, I probably didn't understand the, the procedures in something like this. So we have asked again to, to come in front of the, the commission to request the two-to-one match. I also have a piece in front of me, which is a piece that you all received at the last meeting, but just to remind you of the funds that we have raised to this date, and they do include two pieces of in-kind. And I do have included in this packet a letter outlining the support for each one of those, and I'd, I'd like to just pass them out now, and you can take it if you need to, or, and also included in the packet is a, a short letter from Dr. Dixon, because we really do feel that the skate plaza is a greatly needed kind of park for our kids. There's a population of kids who are out there in the street that don't need to be in the street. We can keep them safe with this plaza. So I'll just pass these on to...
Nina, actually, you've got to give those to the clerk and...
Okay. I don't know my procedures very well, do I? But I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'll give them to the clerk.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Yeah, Stu Bradley again, and I'm here to represent the Marquette County Community Foundation, and probably within the last year, the community foundation has taken over the responsibility of, from the cities, the money that had been donated in the past, we, we actually are custodians of that money. But we've taken up a very interest, a lot of interest in this particular skateboard plaza because we think it's just a tremendous asset to the city. Now, if you do do the seventy-five thousand, we expect this is going to cost over three hundred thousand dollars. Your return is going to be, you know, like five to one, basically, an investment. And I think from a safety standpoint and getting kids and adults that like to skateboard or rollerblade, it's going to keep them out of Matson Park and going down the memorial by the fire, memorial there and so forth. We just think, our youth committee, I think, has given seventeen thousand dollars already pledged for this. That's from the community foundation. We're holding, if, I think we're over two hundred thousand dollars already if the money comes in from the seventy-five thousand, and a lot of trust, a lot of things pending from various different foundations in the United States. I don't think we're going to have any trouble finding the money, and it's going to be a huge asset for the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me back. The last thing I just simply want to add is, I've been doing some morning reading. I get up early and try to kind of catch up on the news, and certainly one of the things that you read about and see is that cities continue to be financially challenged to be able to do everything that everybody would like to have in a city. And I want to thank all the people in the community, the skateboard plaza, and the young kids who've really stuck by this project over, you know, on a timeline basis, five years, to try to achieve the goal that you can help move us greatly towards tonight by voting to, to let us access that money. And, and that said, I, I'm also very thoughtful of how do communities become more engaged and more involved with the city? And I think that there's nuances to this whole thing that we can sit and hash over about issues of, of how money was raised, et cetera. But I hope that is, is the commission has the opportunity to at least briefly think over the history here, that the greater good can be served by being able to reflect on the number of people that we have been able to involve on a community basis, the fact, like Stu said, that this will be a community asset. I think that, I think that the opportunity for the, for the city to really grab a hold of what we've accomplished in terms of multiple parties being involved to get to this goal, albeit over a long duration, would be greatly appreciated. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
A member reading something.
It's, we have a lot of information up here. If you'd like to speak, you can go ahead.
Yeah, he's just trying to be arrogant, Mr. Stonehouse.
Frank Jeff Verito, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. Just about everyone favors the skate plaza, and few would argue with the funding source, public or private. However, a controversial mining company has apparently contributed, probably for the wrong reasons. And please, you're free to cut me off if by chance I did not understand that correctly. You can almost bet that the majority of area skateboarders who will use the plaza do not favor this company's mine in northwest Marquette County. Numerous citizens and even one commissioner have accused this company of atrocities, and that this member, I believe, is a major advocate of the skateboard plaza. It shouldn't surprise anyone that this company would donate in order to try and fool the public into believing for one second that they're a community player. They've deceived us before in demonstrating the epitome of the step-by-step hurdle-by-hurdle approach that people like you and corporations alike use to cram their filth down the throats of residents who want no part of them. First, they influenced the DEQ to grant their application, which some of us knew was a done deal from day one. Then suddenly, an untold number of trees were destroyed for power lines, followed by the urgent need for a haul road that would consume more acreage than the mine itself. Your urge not to resort to dirty money to fund the skate plaza for the love of the youth whose land and water are threatened by a corporate giant who's forced themselves upon us for their own selfish profit. The new member is urged to show some guts, to speak up for the second time in eight whole months, to not allow our residents to be fooled into believing that this company is acting in any interest other than its own.
Thank you. Commissioners, care to start off with discussion or a motion? Commissioner Ryan?
I think there are a number of issues here, but I, I think there, we do have a recommendation, which is to approve a budget adjustment of up to seventy-five thousand dollars to be included in the fiscal year two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve budget to support the park, and to reaffirm the city's earlier pledge to match one dollar from the general fund for every two dollars donated. So that would be my motion that we accept that recommendation.
Okay. Do we have support? Commissioner De Petro supports. Commissioner Ryan, additional comments?
Having said that, there are, there are some questions that have to be resolved. I know, and this is going to have to be some, perhaps, negotiation or discussion between city staff and the skate park committee, the Marquette, uh, community found, Marquette County Community Foundation, as to what funds are eligible for the match, when the specific match would be paid, you know, the timing of it. So I think these are issues that have to be resolved going forward, but I think this action will, again, put the money in the budget for this year, so the, the skate park committee can go forward with their fundraising, and will reaffirm the city's commitment to the project.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner De Petro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I feel very confident now that after seven years of these people working very hard and putting in many, many hundreds of hours to get to this point, I feel that it would be in the best interest of the city and the city commission to support this at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Commissioner Schneider?
You know, I want to echo what Commissioner Ryan had said. I'm, I'm concerned about how we're treating in-kind donations in this because the language is not very specific. I definitely think that there's a number of organizations locally who are giving in-kind, and I would really like to see the, the dollar values of the work that they're putting in be, be put towards contributions, so that we can count that towards our seventy-five thousand. So I think that's significant. I also want to say that I very much agree with Mr. Verito's opinion that I'm very concerned that the Kennicott Mining Company in Rio Tinto are putting in money to be able to look like they are giving back to the community when, in fact, they're actually extracting a whole lot more than they're giving back. So I have a very strong concern about that, and I would appreciate if the skate plaza community would take that into account, and it would be great if you guys could find funds from inside the area, but I do understand that that can be really difficult with the amounts that we're talking about. So I just wanted to make that known.
Thank you. Additional comments? Commissioner Neme?
I just have a question. Does, our motion as it stands, does that include in-kind contributions as an appropriate match for the seventy-five thousand dollars, or is it the intent of the, the motion that that isn't included?
It was the intent of my motion that that was the kind of issue that has to be worked out between the staff and the skate park committee to bring back to this commission. This motion puts the money back in the budget and reaffirms our commitment. It doesn't deal with those specific questions.
I guess I would like to see, as Commissioner Schneider said, that in, in-kind match would be, would be eligible for, as a match for the seventy-five thousand, and perhaps it's just the, 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 how we actually assess the match or determine the value of the matches is, is up in the air. I don't think anyone has a problem with the using match in-kind.
Your Honor? It's not my intention to exclude in-kind. It's just I felt if we, if we took this next step, it would give opportunities to sit down and, even as Commissioner Schneider mentioned, you know, how these are calculated, what they mean, so there's a, you know, a real framework for the city to work from. And I think there are also issues when we have a project like this, as to when the money is expended. None of us wants to see a half-completed project, you know, so I, I think there, there are a lot of questions that have to be answered, but I think this reaffirms our support and allows those questions to be answered as we go forward.
Okay. That satisfies me.
Commissioner Saint Ang?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I support the project. Obviously, a commission prior to my existence here thought this was a doable and viable project, and I concur. I do echo some of the concerns with regard to how it gets structured. Given that some of these issues are yet to be negotiated, I wonder if it would be appropriate for us to adopt the recommendation that has been proposed, but then I think it still almost compels it to come back to us for final resolution, depending on how in-kind donations will be accounted for, the timing of the project. One of the, one of the questions I have is, is it's up to seventy-five thousand on a two-to-one, so does that assume that if the project gets re-scoped at something less than two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, that it, that our contribution is less? I, I think that's an issue. My, my primary issue, really, quite frankly, remains from the standpoint of seventy-five thousand dollars is a fair amount of money. It's a great project. I'm supporting the project, but I'd like to see us also acknowledge from a budget standpoint where that money's going to come from. It's early in the budget year. We are, what, eleven days into the budget year? And to leave it open-ended and not have us resolve where that money's going to come from, I think would be not very prudent of us to do. So I can support the recommendation. I'd like to see the recommendation modified so that it comes back to us, that at least gives the skateboard park committee the, the support that it needs. We still have to resolve a couple of fundamental issues, but I can support the project. I'd like to figure out where the money's going to come from, though. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I, I agree with a lot of the comments that have been said, and I think that through our city attorney and city staff, we can work those details out. The in-kind contribution angle, I, I do understand, and I, I guess we'll take that up at another time. You know, what we struggle with is how do you put a value on X? And, and, you know, our original deal was cash, two-to-one. So I guess we need, you know, when that process evolves and how we do this, we, we've just got to make sure that the city's interests are protected, but, you know, this is a group that's always supported this, and I think will continue to do so. In response to the question of where the, the money's coming from, on the thirtieth of June, the money was there in the budget to use because we had committed, and it was earmarked in the budget. It was not spent, so my guess is that, that will roll over into this current year budget. City manager, do you know, is that the case?
Let me ask our CFO to step up to the Diaz and address that directly.
If you pass the current motion, then the money will roll over, and that's really why we're here tonight, just to get the money to be rolled over into the next, well, the current, now current fiscal year. So that's all we're doing now. It's really, a lot of people consider it house-cleaning type of stuff, but we just need a formal motion approved to get it from last fiscal year to the current fiscal year.
All right. Thank you, Gary. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Well, only that, you know, we're, we're still kind of wrapped around the actual, actual, rather, on cash versus in-kind. Just doing some quick math here, I think they've got about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars I see in actual cash money, and on the basis of, of our two-to-one match, we should release, based on that ratio, if we choose to do so. And then to retain the rest of the funding until we figure out what is an in-kind. I mean, having obviously done grant work before, we understand that in-kind can be a bit of a, of a cloudy issue sometimes, and I think, you know, we need to determine did, what is the intent of the original recommendation or decision of the commission in terms of cash versus in-kind, and then proceed on that basis. I would also just make a comment on money from Rio Tinto. Money is, is colorless. It's utterly neutral. You can use it for good, you can use it for evil, you can use it for anything you want to. So I would look on, on wherever you get money from, use it for good, and if you don't like where it's coming from, remember, it's still negotiable securities. It'll get you exactly where you want to go to, whatever your political leaning may be. So I would, I would not look on that as being an issue that either this commission or anyone else should be too concerned with. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Saint Ang?
Thank you, Your Honor. If I could ask Gary a question, I don't, I certainly don't wish to be difficult, but in my reading of this recommendation and the fiscal effect, I guess I would encourage in the future to maybe use some English language that, that says exactly what you just said, which was the money was allocated in the ten-eleven budget and is being rolled over. That's not what this says. This says that it has to be adjusted in the, in the general fund to the tune of seventy-five thousand, and, and it, because I remember specifically asking this question during the budget process, and I was under distinct impression that that money, because it wasn't allocated then, was being used or allocated for some other expense. And this, the way this is written, gives me that impression as well, and maybe I'm out in left field, maybe the other commissioners don't read it the same way I do, but it is, at the very minimum, it is confusing between how I interpret what was written and what you just said. So take that for what it's worth.
Well, I didn't write the agenda supplement, so I'm not sure who wrote it or anything, but the way I described it is the way it will work. The seventy-five thousand dollars technically is still sitting there. It never was used for anything, and if you don't do anything with it now, it's still just going to sit there in fund balance. So we just need the motion to get the seventy-five thousand that was sitting in the last fiscal year moved over to this fiscal year. That's really all we're trying to do with this agenda item.
I, I appreciate that explanation, and, and again, I, I just wish that we write these things a little bit more, with a little more clarity in the future. Thank you.
Any additional comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say yes. Opposed? Motion carries? Now under new business, number four, report and recommendation from the mayor regarding city manager's annual evaluation and compensation adjustment. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, your city manager contract committee consisting of Mayor Pro Tim De Petro, Commissioners Neme and Ryan, met to review the evaluations completed by all commissioners. Further, the committee reviewed the manager's contract and compensation. City manager Veda completed his first year of service with the city of Marquette as of May tenth, two thousand and eleven. Our contract with the city manager provides that each June, we will evaluate his performance. The current contract runs through June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve. The overall evaluation was very positive with the managers rate, with the manager rated very good to outstanding in most categories. Commissioners, Commissioner comments and suggestions have been provided to the city manager for further improvement. In reviewing compensation, we took into account comparable local positions, other municipalities, the level of salary at which, at which we started the city manager, and the progress of the city in the past year. We think the adjustment is appropriate based upon our review. Fiscal effect, the fiscal year two thousand and eleven, twelve... Fiscal effect, the fiscal year 2011-12 budget contains an allowance of $10,300 for the city manager's salary adjustment. Recommendation, approve the city manager contract committee's recommendation to increase the city manager's salary effective July 1, 2011, from $103,000 to $113,300 and extend the manager's contract two years to June 30, 2014, alternatives as determined by the commission.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will move to approve the city manager's contract committee's recommendation to increase the city manager's salary effective July 1, 2011, from $103,000 to $113,300 and extend the manager's contract two years to June 30, 2014.
Thank you. Do we have support?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse, comments?
I would only comment that I think we have a terrific manager who has done a wonderful job, and I cannot speak more highly of him and every contact that I have certainly come with him and what I've seen come out of his office, I think, has been remarkable. It's really been a pleasure working with him. He's done, I think, a terrific job for this community, and I look forward to continuing to do so.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
Well, as one of those who is on the committee, maybe I can expand a little bit, and perhaps the other members may want to, too. I think all of us found some shortcoming with the process, not with the manager, but with the process of evaluating the manager. And unfortunately, it's pretty much something that's been carried over from the past. And we've agreed, and the manager has agreed, and I think most of this commission will agree, that by the time we get to next year, we will have a better process in place to do that. We'd like that process to be based more on specific goals and accomplishments that that we as a commission and and we jointly with the manager will will develop for our city and then look at what we've achieved regarding those goals. But we didn't have that to work with this year. We had a kind of an old-fashioned system, and, you know, it worked, and some of us griped about it, and some of us just went ahead and did it, and some came kind of in-between. But we do have a handle on a better process going forward, and I can assure you that's going to happen. I think regarding the salary, just so everyone has a better feeling on that, this was not a typical, let's say, raise in salary. It was really an evaluation of, we brought Mr. Vida in, we paid him less than the previous city manager. He was a highly-paid government employee at a different level, but that that didn't affect his pay here. He was still a rookie as far as we were concerned. I think he's moved beyond that rookie stage, as Commissioner Stonehouse said. He's done a very good job. Everybody in their evaluations believes he's done good to excellent, so we felt it was important to look at what other comparable positions in the community paid, particularly in the government sector, and also to look at what other cities might pay. And we felt this adjustment was appropriate after reviewing that information.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. Commissioner Neme?
Thank you, Your Honor. I might just briefly expand on something that Commissioner Ryan mentioned, is we are going to undertake a a goals and priorities process to set priorities for the next year. And I think not only that will that provide a much better review of the city manager at year-end, but it'll also allow us as a commission to to lay out our plan of what we want to see accomplished, and and we can then bring forth some of the priorities that we we all may hold dear and and want to want to address, and we haven't done this here before. And so I think that's a it's a good side benefit of the manager's evaluation process.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Since city manager Vida's come aboard within the last year, he hit the ground running with both feet. He did a lot of organizing within the city. He's found many, many ways for the city, city department heads, city employees to be more efficient. And not only that, but he opened his office door to the public so they could come in, address issues with him, and he found that to be very productive. So once a month, the middle of the month, on a Wednesday at the Pierre White Public Library, he does have a two-hour period for residents to come and meet with him face-to-face, address their issues. And one of the things that he instituted was a 24-hour response from a department head. The 24-hour response is in three working days. It's from the time he notifies the department head, around 2:00, let's say, Wednesday afternoon, they have to respond by 2:00 Thursday afternoon and and address the issues that he had that was presented to the city manager, to the city manager, to the department head. Now, which I've gotten so much positive feedback from residents saying, I can't believe how quickly the city employees were knocking at my door to check on issues that I had, either with my lot or sewer or the street, whatever it would be. And they were there within a day and working with the residents. So so many of them are really pleased with our present city manager, Vida, and I really felt, going through the evaluations, that he deserves just what we had recommended. So everybody's very proud of, and and I know that as city manager, it's a very tough life out there, but he's out there during the day, meeting the public and walking around the city, so everybody gets a stop and chat with him on the street also. So very good job. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Stenaj?
Thank you, Your Honor. You know, when the the manager submitted his application, I thought at the time he he certainly had the the ability and the attributes necessary to to step in and help us. I was hoping that a change of perspective, given the fact that he hadn't been a city manager before, would bring kind of a breath of fresh air to the process. And to an extent, I think he's accomplished that. As we went through the interview process, I felt strongly that he was the best candidate that we had in front of us and supported his his employment. I do have some concerns about the sheer quantity of the size of the adjustment, and I don't mean any disrespect to the manager. I do believe that he's done an admirable job for a first-year city manager. I think he's instituted, as Commissioner DePietro has pointed out, a number of great programs and whatnot. But I'm concerned on a couple of fronts. One, the one of the issues has already been presented, and that is, we were, we, us commissioners were afforded, in my humble opinion, a very shallow and inadequate form to evaluate the manager. And I think it's a disservice to the manager that we were asked to use that form. I think in many respects, the form that we used put us in a in a position to evaluate his performance with regard to his interaction with his staff. And quite frankly, as a commissioner, I don't know that we're necessarily privy to those interactions and to that that the development of staff, if you will. If if we have that that specific information, we perhaps have taken the commission position too much into the administrative realm. So I think the form was woefully inadequate, and I absolutely support the notion that the form needs to change. And I think the form needs to change to the extent that the manager should have an annual work plan, for lack of any other term. And that work plan should be very explicit as to what is expected of him and how he will be measured, not as subjectively as we've measured in this current process, but measured based on his performance, based on the things that the commission wants him to accomplish in the next fiscal year. And I think that, not to speak for the manager, but I I suspect, knowing him, that that he would want that opportunity as well, to have something a little bit more definitive. Other concerns I have is, you know, in the current economy, you know, we're allocating out a fair amount of money, a 10% pay adjustment. And whether or not it's argued that he came in in a undervalued salary role, I think the salary rule was predicated on his lack of experience as a city manager. Has he done a good job? I think he has, and I think he's made some great improvements. But my concern is going to be going forward is, if he does the if he does a better job in his second year than he did in his first, and I would expect that he would, does that warrant a 12% increase next year, a 14% increase next year? Where do you draw the line with regard to precedence? Does this have an impact potentially on any future negotiations, contractual negotiations that the commission undertakes with regard to other staff members going forward? I think it's a I think it's a fair issue. Cost-of-living adjustments in the last year have been negligible at best. It's a it's a large amount of money. Again, don't get me wrong, I I support an adjustment. I think he's done a good job stepping in. I was surprised to see, given the the poor form that we used, that he received a perfect score by four of the commissioners out of the seven. That's phenomenal. To give anyone a perfect score in a year is phenomenal. I don't know how that gets done. I don't know how he can, I don't know how he can do any better than that. And and I think he probably attests to the fact that there's room for improvement, and there's a lot of other things that can be done in this in the in the position. So I I'm concerned about the size, I'm concerned about the timing with regard to the economy, and I absolutely support the notion that we have to come up with a better system to evaluate the manager going forward. What we were asked to use was very poor. So comments for what they're worth. Thank you.
Commissioner Snyder?
Well, Commissioner Stenaj just said at length a lot of my concerns in the process. I do believe that that our city manager has done an absolutely fantastic job, and I share a number of the the concerns that Commissioner Stenaj does. I'm really glad to know that some of the other commissioners ran into, I guess, similar feelings with the form that we had. It was really inadequate, and as a first-year commissioner, I was looking at it thinking, this is so subjective, I don't really know what to measure it by. And so obviously, over the next year, we'll be focusing on how do we redo the format of of an evaluation? But I think a lot of it comes from us, as far as what vision we're expecting of the city and where we want to go, not just a one-year plan and not a five-year city master plan, but really where we want to take the city in the long run, where the city itself wants to go. And I think that whatever goals we're measuring our city manager by need to be able to fit into the city's long-term vision, not just what we think, but couched within, you know, a 20- or 50-year plan of where we want to to be able to go and progress towards that. Other than that, I want to thank the city manager for doing a great job. I'm glad we're working with him.
Well, a lot's been said, and I concur with most of it. You know, the talk is by next year, we'll have a better plan in place, and I'm confident we will. Having said that, I couldn't be happier with the performance of our city manager through the last year on many levels, the way city staff has been streamlined and refocused on what, you know, is really vital to our interests here, the way he's embraced the history of the community, looking forward, and what we do, the openness with citizens and the ability to to speak and interact with them, and, you know, a multitude of of things. It's just a breath of fresh air. So I couldn't be happier, and I'll certainly vote in favor of this, so.
Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Up next, a report and recommendation from the city manager, request to rezone 1216 Grant Avenue from General Residential to Multiple Family Residential. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the planning commission reviewed an application for rezoning the property located at 1216 Grant Avenue from General General Residential RG to Multiple Family Residential RM at their June 7, 2011 regular meeting. After conducting a public hearing, the planning commission passed the following motion. It was moved by Van Ness, supported by Schaefer, and carried five to three. That after a review of the staff file review slash analysis for 01-rez-05-11, the planning commission finds that the request does not meet the intent of the zoning ordinance as it expands a spot zoning and hereby recommends to the city commission denial of the request as presented. The vote on the motion was a's. Chairman Degush, Van Ness, Cambenzi, Laurie, and Schaefer. The nays were Hangesto, O'Neil, and Primo. The zoning ordinance provides that the city commission shall either hold a public hearing or deny the petition to amend the zoning ordinance. Please see the attached for complete background material and excerpt of the planning commission meeting minutes. Fiscal effect, none. Recommendation, consider the planning commission's recommendation to not to deny the rezoning request. Alternatives, deny the request or schedule a public hearing for the July 25, 2011 commission meeting to reconsider the planning commission's recommendation and to take public comment.
All right, thank you. Commissioners? Commissioner Ryan?
I would like to move that we schedule a public hearing for the July 25, 2011 commission meeting to reconsider the planning commission's recommendation and take public comment.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Stonehouse?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan, comments?
You know, I I really don't like to take to disagree with the planning commission. I think they're a hard-working group, and I have great respect for them. In this case, I really question the decision. And their only rationale appears to be that they view it as an expansion of spot zoning. It's hard to discuss this so that people will understand what we're talking about, but a developer is planning to build a multifamily housing unit on two lots on the McClellan The unit's going to be built one way or the other. The question is, can he build it in such a way that I think it will actually wind up looking better for the City of Marquette? And I I think it will. Under the alternate plan, the the unit would look more like a motel, I guess, with a lot of parking out in front. Under the revised plan, it would look more like a residential area with some parking behind. So I I think it's worth scheduling a public hearing to get input from the public.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I think Commissioner Ryan really nailed the issue on the head in in terms of what the opportunities are and what the potential is for the the property. Again, I I really, too, hate to disagree with the planning commission on an issue, but as I begin to work through the paperwork on it, I just don't understand their decision and and why that decision would have been made in that fashion. It appears to me, again, that the best thing we can do is move forward with a public hearing and do the best we can for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment?
Well, I'm going to I'm going to vote in favor of this motion. I guess more so I can hear more about it. I'm not I'm not going to say I agree or disagree with their decision at this point, but I think it's prudent that we take the opportunity to have a public hearing and listen to residents and and maybe the applicant and do some more homework in between, so I intend on supporting it. Seeing no other comments, I'll call the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, a report and recommendation from the city manager, RFP 1104, Better Buildings for Michigan Contractor Selection for South Marquette Sweep. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the Better Buildings for Michigan Grant was awarded to the city in March of 2011. The city is partnering with the Superior Watershed Partnership to market home energy home energy improvements to the citizens of South Marquette. Approximately $350,000 will be available through the program to assist residents with various energy improvements that will be identified during the home evaluation performed by an authorized program coordinator, or contractor, excuse me. The program requires a minimum of two contractors be selected through the City of Marquette's competitive bidding process. Proposal documents were advertised and sent to the Market Builders Exchange and aid-approved Michigan Saves contractors. Two vendors responded to the request to summarize Michigan Energy Options and Home Evaluation Services, both located in Marquette, Michigan, and both with 100% qualifications for the program. Fiscal effect, none. Contractors are paid are paid from grant funds directly through the Michigan Saves Office recommendation or the Better Buildings for Michigan-South Marquette contracts to Michigan Energy Options of Marquette and Home Evaluation Services of Marquette, being qualified bidders and meeting all specifications. Alternatives as determined by the commission. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, Commissioner Saint Ange?
I just have a quick question. I want to make sure that I understand, the two vendors that are in the staff analysis, I'm assuming were, were included in the eight that were approved, right? These, yes? Okay, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Stonehouse?
I will move toward the Better Buildings for Michigan South Marquette contracts, the Michigan Energy Options of Marquette, and Home Evaluation Services of Marquette being qualified bidders and meeting all specifications.
Thank you. Do we have support? Commissioner Snyder? Supports? Commissioner Stonehouse, comments?
Only that this is a good project. We've discussed it at some length in, in previous meetings, and it's a good opportunity to move forward with it.
Commissioner Snyder?
No further comment.
Any further comments? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, report and recommendation from the city manager, BP 1133, Parking Lot Sealing. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the west parking lot of City Hall and the south parking lot of the Municipal Service Center, MSC, are in need of seal coating, crack filling, and patching. Neither lot, excuse me, has received the recommended maintenance during its lifetime. The maintenance is not perform, if the, if the maintenance is not performed in a timely manner, the lot conditions will go beyond repair and require complete replacement. Funds were budgeted in the FY 1011 operating budget for City Hall and the MSC. Bid documents were advertised and sent to the Market Builders Exchange and four known contractors, excuse me, that perform this type of service. Five contractors responded to a request summarized with Farner Asphalt Sealers of Coquana, Wisconsin, submitting the low bid at $14,018, and Farner Asphalt Sealers also of Coquana, or same company, submitting an alternate bid that was second-low bid at $15,141. Staff has reviewed the bids and recommends the alternate bid submitted by Farner Asphalt Sealers of Coquana, Wisconsin, as it exceeds the requirements set forth in the bid specifications. The alternate bid contains crack routing, which will extend the life of the repairs. Fiscal effect, the FY 1011 operating budget allocated $8,000 in the City Hall Fund and an additional $8,000 in the MSC Fund for this project. Recommendation, or the bid in an amount not to exceed $15,141 for parking lot sealing at City Hall and the MSC to Farner Asphalt Sealers of Coquana, Wisconsin, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I move that we go with the recommendation or the bid in amount not to exceed $15,141 for parking lot sealing at City Hall and the Municipal Service Center to Farmer's Asphalt Sealer of Coquana, Wisconsin, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Snyder? Commissioner DePietro, comments?
Just that these lots are way overdue and, and they're probably at the limit right now. If it wasn't done this year, there're going to be a lot of potholes in the parking lot that Public Works that has a patching crew that does the major local streets would be spending time in their own lot, so this is the best time to get her done. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
No further comments.
Thank you. Any additional comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? All right, next up, number eight, report and recommendation from the city manager, BP 1134, Center Line Painting. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, the city of Marquette must perform yearly maintenance on lane and intersection markings on streets throughout the city. Approximately 25 lineal miles of street markings have been identified as being in need of repairing. Major street funds were approved in FY 1011 to include the repainting of pavement markings. Bid specifications, request, bid specifications requested a bid for regular dry paint with alternative bid, alternative bids for waterborne and epoxy paints. Regular dry and waterborne paints have similar longevity characteristics, with dry paint being slightly superior of approximately one year, and epoxy is expected to last three to four years. Bid documents, documents were advertised and sent to the Market Builders Exchange and two known contractors that perform this type of service. JCS Incorporated was the sole contractor responding to the bid request. Unit prices are attached. Staff has reviewed the bid and recommends a combination of the original bid for regular dry paint and an alternate bid for epoxy. The epoxy will be used on a portion of West Washington Street and McClellan Avenue. The total bid will not exceed $15,000. Fiscal effect, the FY 1011 operating budget allocated $15,000 in the major street fund for this project. Recommendation, or to bid in the amount not to exceed $15,000 at the unit prices bid for Center Line Painting to JCS Incorporated of Bariga, Michigan, being the sole bid and meeting specifications. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Anyone, anyone? Commissioner Ryan?
I move we award the bid in an amount not to exceed $15,000 at the unit price bid for Center Line Painting to JCS Inc. of Bariga, Michigan, being the sole bid and meeting specifications.
All right, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Oh, too fast. Commissioner Niemi supports. Commissioner Ryan, any discussion?
No, it's a needed service. This is the, the, the only bid, but it is within budget amount, so that's encouraging me that it's, it's probably in the proper range.
Commissioner Niemi?
Nothing further, Your Honor.
Additional comments? Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to ask the staff, two questions is, once the contractor has been contacted that they've been approved to do the work, when will this center line painting begin?
It'll begin sometime in July, ending later than August.
Because all summer, us commissioners have been receiving a lot of complaints that a lot of areas, the paint has already faded off as you go into major intersections, and we're, it'd be nice if we could get that done during the period when most of the tourists are in town between May and August. And one other question is, does the city Public Works sign and painting shop, do they still do the pedestrian crossways?
To my knowledge, yes.
And would you know when these crossings would be painted at all?
I do not know when they're scheduled at this time.
Okay, yeah. When you find out, could you pass the word on to city manager?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. You know, Commissioner DePietro hit on something, we have gotten quite a few emails, at least I have, regarding the center line painting, so I guess I'd like to see if next year we can't move this up earlier in the year. It really gets worn out through the winter plowing, which would make sense to do it as soon as we can in the spring. And I know from a budget perspective, essentially, we'd have to be doing it twice in one budget year, but I, I think we can find a way to do that, so. Anyway, I'll call the question. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Yes? Opposed? Motion carries. Report and recommendation from the city manager, BP 1127, Garbage Can Liners. So, when you're deciding to run for commission, it's not all big issues. We're now talking about garbage can liners, so. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, annually, the city purchases clear 35-inch by 52-inch, 44-gallon, 2.5-mil thickness, low-density can liners for litter, litter barrels at various locations throughout the city. The city uses roughly 16,000 can liners annually of this size. Specifications were advertised and sent to four local vendors. Bids were opened on June 6, 2011, with seven vendors, vendors responding. The bid tabulation is attached. Because this is a large quantity of bags from a new vendor, two sample cases were ordered to verify bag performance in the city parks. The sample bags performed adequately. Fiscal effect, the Parks and Recreation Maintenance/Public Works Department, $65,000, or $6,500 Municipal Service Center, $2,000, Lakeview Arena, $1,000, Tourist Park, $1,000, and Marina, $500 funds contain funding for this, for this project in FY 1112. Recommendation, or the bid in the amount not to exceed $4,560 at the unit prices bid for garbage can liners to All American Poly of Piscataway, New Jersey, being the low bid and meeting specifications. Alternatives as determined by the, by the city commission. Also, could select a different vendor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
I'll move that we award the bid in an amount of, an amount not to exceed $4,560 at the unit prices bid for garbage can liners to the All American Poly of Piscataway, if I pronounced that correctly, New Jersey, being the low bid and meeting specifications.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
You know, I was looking over this, trying to find something to debate about, and it's just not there. This is too simple, makes sense. Let's do it.
Commissioner Ryan, anything to expand on?
I have no further comments on this issue now.
Anyone else? Commissioner Stonehouse?
As a native of New Jersey, it is pronounced Piscataway, New Jersey. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Seeing no other comment, all in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, report and recommendation from the city manager regarding awards, award of bids for gallery and gift shop lighting. City clerk?
Yes, Your Honor. Background, staff recently advertised a request for proposal to install new halo trackheads and lamps in the gift shop to match the current tracking system. Installing a new tracking, track system, circuit improvements, and trackheads and lamps in the lower-level gallery in the Arts and Culture Center. The proposals were due on June 23, 2011. The results are summarized below with Wright Electric Company submitting a bid of $7,973.72. The project was approved in the FY 2010-11 Capital Improvement Budget, fiscal effects. $8,000 was approved for this project in the FY 1011 budget. 50% of the funding for this project is a $4,000 grant from the Lake Superior Art Association. Recommendation, or to construction contract to Wright Electric Company for gallery and gift shop lighting in the amount of $7,973.72. Alternatives as determined by the commission.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I move we award a construction contract to Wright Electric Company for gallery and gift shop lighting in the amount of $7,973.72.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Commissioner Snyder?
Second.
Commissioner Ryan, any comments?
No, it's just time to move forward with this.
Thank you. Commissioner Snyder?
None at this time.
Any additional? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Last up, Commissioner Niemi, you asked to place an item on the agenda regarding, I believe, the ban shell for naturalization.
Yes.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I guess I would make a motion at this time that we waive the fee and the deposit on the ban shell, that we would charge the United States District Court of the Department of Homeland Security for a naturalization ceremony to take place on August 12, 2011.
All right, do we have support? Commissioner Ryan?
I'll support the motion.
All right, Commissioner Niemi?
Well, I think this is a, a, a good event. I've had the, the opportunity to attend two naturalization events for my, my children, and I would encourage any natural-born American to attend a naturalization event. It's, it's a, it's, it's really a, a inspiring event, and I think it, when you see these people who, who come to our country, work hard to become citizens, it is just heartwarming to, to see that they, they reach their, their, the, the goal that they attain, and it's a, a great event that I think anyone could appreciate, and, and I think it's appropriate that we use our, our jewel of a park to welcome the new citizens to our country and to our city.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I supported the motion because I believe it's a good idea. I don't necessarily think that anytime the federal government asks for a favor, that we have to grant it, because I don't think they always consider our favors, our requests. But in this case, for the reason espoused by Commissioner Niemi, I think it's a very important ceremony, and I think we would want to be part of making that happen, so I very strongly support this.
All right, thank you. Any additional comments? All in favor, say yes.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is public comment. Comments should be limited to five minutes per person.
I'd like to, to ask you, Your Honor, to, after I'm done here, if you would please state for the record who this lady is, the Assistant City Attorney, and how she became the Assistant Attorney, because the charter obviously says that the mayor is not to appoint officials of the city. I'm not really sure if she works for, with Mr. Keith, it says Ron Keith on, on the thing there, so, so we just ask you for the record to, to say who that is, because it's important that a attorney would advise their client when they're making decisions like this. And, but I would encourage the common people, you know, you common folks, you know, when Bob O'Neil was here last week, he talked about the common people, that the common people of the city to supersede the attempts of the Marquette City Commission by filing an initiatory petition for the review of the charter, and that follows under Section 117.25 of Public Acts 37. It only takes a 5% petition, and this would supersede this, you know, little working group task force thing you're gonna put together, and then be right at the last hour, August 30th, and then say, "Oh, well, maybe we won't let you vote on that in November." And then you would lose your opportunity to get this on the ballot, and this is very important. It says you would then be guaranteed an election of a charter review commission, see if these people, see if these folks here, you know, if, you know, Christine Basola, maybe Bob Kulischak, see if they want to go for elected position also. And I suggest that the charter be changed for you folks in the city that are concerned about all of this, that the city attorney be elected official, for one thing, because then every two years, you'd go back, and then they'd have to face the voters, not to the, not to the mayor, appointed by the mayor. And then that the mayor should not take part in debate. This is clearly inconsistent with Robert's Rules of Order. This is not supposed to happen. The only way that this happens is because it's in the charter. The charter says the mayor gets to take far, full debate and have vote and debate. You should take that away from the, the mayor. He should not have that, because he's, this is an undue influence. This is like a ruling class we have in Marquette, and it seems to be through the whole county, because this Bob Kulischak, he's on the County Board of Health, you have other people that are on townships boards, and they, they go jump here to there on all these boards and committees, and it's a ruling class, it seems to be. And to make sure that the opportunity for the mayor to create the ruling class is what is happening here and not, would not happen. And I would also encourage the newly-appointed members of the City of Marquette Charter Review Working Group to contact your own personal attorneys before you accept this position, because, you know, it's gonna be, well, you had nine members, and then you appointed 10 to a nine-member board, I'm not sure if one doesn't get voting, or what happens? They had no charge. You didn't have a charge for them. You know, they're, they're gonna make up their own charge, they're just, they probably, somebody's probably already got this all worked out, and you're just gonna have a couple meetings and say, "Yeah, we'll just go with that." And also, and for, you know, Commissioner Stonehouse, what he's saying is that your rules, that you've already approved, Robert's Rules of Order states right in it, that breaking the rules for the right reasons is still wrong. You take in the bad money, the blood money, to do a good thing, it's still wrong. You know, the blood diamonds and all that stuff, it's, you know, it's still wrong. And also, to, to consider what Yarmo was talking about here, about the DEQ and the DNR for polluting the lake, I would like to report to Chief Angeli that it appears that, Your Honor, Mayor Kivula stated at last meeting that he knowingly discharges hundreds of thousands of cigarette butts into Lake Superior after they're accumulated into the city's source system. And we have traps in there, you can trap that stuff, right? And you flush them out into the lake, and they come right back out to the lake, onto the beach, you go, "Oh, where did these come from?" Well, the city flushed them out there, that's where it comes from. And this is littering, and I would like to report that is littering, Chief Angeli, if you could look into that, because there- you could look into that, because there's traps. What do you, just let it go? You let it go down the park that doesn't do that, so you don't have to empty the traps, or what's happening there? There should be a way to catch that. And the dog feces, of course, which, I mean, you should be picking that up, because like the guy said, and like you said, that that flushes down the storm sewers, too, and you flush that out E. coli into, and it comes back onto the beach. That's why it's in the beach, that's why you probably monitor for E. coli, because you're flushing the dog feces down there that's collected. But you just go and get some volunteers, maybe the the four H Club, the, you know, the veterinary folks that would like to be veterinarians in the four H Club could go around and pick up that feces on behalf of the city. And, you know, you could probably get somebody to do that, maybe you know somebody that might want to do that also. And but this is very important, and we know that the City of Detroit is also reviewing their charter. They did it the way the rule the law is, is they said, okay, the Commission said, okay, we want to review the charter, put it to a vote of the of the city. The people of the city did not authorize you to review this charter. That's under the law. You have to have approval to do that, and that triggers the election of a commission, and then it all comes in full force all around. You know, I don't know. This is.
Time's up, sir. Thank you. Time's up.
One minute warning in in the future, please.
One minute warning, so I can. What are your watch orders just in general?
There's a digital display with the time on it staring you.
Oh, there is?
Yeah. Would have been right in front of you, but go ahead, anyone else?
I've been to one hundred and eighty meetings, and I've never seen that in my life.
I've never seen that, you didn't announce it either. Thank you.
High-tech, right? Looked pressed.
Now the time's over, thank you.
It's been there for quite a while.
Eight-thirty on it.
It says eight-thirty.
That'd be the time. It's a clock. Go ahead, please.
Frank Jeff Verito, three fifty East Ridge, Marquette, these are my opinions. Thank you to the woman who commented against your continued endeavor to block our citizens and visitors' views of Lake Superior at the South Rail Yard. Certain members haven't adequately participated. Recently, it surfaced that the senior members who do the most talking misadvised the junior member that in the interest of time, it's best for him to stick to the agenda and to limit his comments to move meetings along. The new member even alludes to this occasionally, while the talkative members who advised him ramble on and on with their political agendas. As a result, the concerns raised by citizens are not addressed during agenda items or closing comments, at which time pertinent public input is supposed to be disseminated. The senior member succeeded in limiting the junior member's effectiveness. We've witnessed ramifications of an all-male commission that is clearly dominated by three members. The third man up means well, but he typically follows the second man's lead, as we can conclude by how often the third man up supports the second man up's motions. Those of us who appreciate Marquette's natural attributes fall by the wayside because the domineering members place such low priority on nature. Not a single member represents those of us who oppose the political agenda of the big three. For example, June twenty-seventh, you ignored an alleged conflict of interest by a planning member who you loaded onto that board to facilitate your Good Old Boy Network, the same developer who you loaded on your Hartwood Committee, resulting in the skewed outcome that you sought. June twenty-seventh, the nearest member stressed the importance of allowing citizens to contribute at an advisory board level, apparently only those whose sentiments align with yours. We need the charter worded to protect us from people like you who choose biased members, as we've documented on your Hartwood Committee. Now history repeats itself on your charter review board. Just because they applied doesn't mean they should be put on. I recognize only four names that you appointed tonight, three of them members of your Good Old Boy Network, and mirror images of two men who were recalled. These three cannot be trusted to objectively set policy regarding the public or on the scope of your authority. Let us recommend changes to the charter that allow us to elect our own mayor and city attorney, like is done in civilized governments. Another citizen accused you of entertaining closed-session meetings of the Waterfront Safety Task Task Force. If so, you violated the Open Meetings Act, and you need to explain yourselves in a court of law. In his closing comment last May twenty-third, your most manipulative member claimed everyone had a chance to be heard, referring mostly to the safe walk to school residents whose time you wasted with your needless second reading. He was the big advocate in recommending that certain areas of Hartwood be preserved beyond which the ad hoc committee had recommended, yet his vote fell far short of reasonability. And when confronted with the specific details of what aspects of the plan are flawed, he fell silent, knowing any answer he gave would dig him in deeper. You see, not being being heard and having input are worlds apart. You know, we're not here to be heard, we're here to make a difference, differences that could have saved two lives last summer, where your machismo is not more important to you. June twenty-seventh, I brought attention to our community's most, one of our most serious problems, quote, "Odd, you read your sexual awareness proclamation, April eleventh, without mentioning word one about the extent of the problem in Marquette. Are any of you aware of how low Marquette's overall crime rate is while the sexual assault rate is through the roof, partly because of the alcohol problem that you promote? You're not downtown at night to observe how stupid people act on that stuff with the seven of you in charge," end of quote. During this juncture, the chair looked amused. How could any so-called mayor of any municipality find this amusing? The data jumps out like a red flag to anyone worldwide who references Marquette crime statistics. This is an embarrassment to our every citizen, regardless as to whether the rate is actually this high, or if it's inflated due to variations in reporting, and I believe it's a combination of both. Shame on you.
Thank you, Mr. Verito. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Again, good evening here in Malankin Lake, Marquette Drive. I'm glad that you voted to have the citizens have a nice, new citizens to have a nice location to become citizens of this country. When I became a citizen in seventy-four, it was at the federal courthouse upstairs at the post office, very cold, and just few people, and and kind of a done deal, and that's all there was to it. And I am proud to be an American citizen. Unfortunately, we have a few members in our community that abuse their citizenship, and that's unfortunate. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Move to Commissioner discussion. Commissioner Neme?
I have nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Commissioner Schneider?
I would like to echo Commissioner Neme's comments.
Commissioner St. Ange?
Thank you, Your Honor. My hat's off to the Fourth of July Committee and to Coannis for putting on a phenomenal Fourth of July. It's it's one of those holidays that my family loves to participate in, and thought the event was wonderful over the weekend, and certainly the weather didn't detract from it, a little rain on the fireworks tonight, but enjoyed them nonetheless. My hat's off. I think it's just a testament to what public-private partnerships, if you will, can do in the community by and large, and I appreciate it, and hope we have great events again next year. Also want to echo the sentiments expressed earlier with regard to the street line painting issue. I, too, have received a number of comments, and just you can't help but notice that our streets are not striped, and for the life of me, I can't figure out, I'd love to see the balance of of cost justifications as to being more effective to do it once a year as compared to doing it with a higher-quality paint that might last a little bit longer. But I hope it's done tomorrow, because I think in some high-traffic areas, it's certainly necessary, but hopefully it'll be a high priority. With that, I appreciate it, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Commissioner DePietro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just recognize some of the city employees on their anniversary within their department is July tenth, Staff Engineer Mikhail Kelpula had his five years of service, and on July nineteenth, Eric Steinman, Facility and Maintenance Manager, will have his one year of service, along with James Trigear, Equipment Mechanic in the motor pool. July twenty-fourth, Dan Solomon, Engineering Tech Two and Senior Drafter, will have five years of service. And July twenty-second, Police Chief Mike Angeli will have thirty-five years of service. And on July twenty-sixth, Patrol Officer Mike Roth will have one year of service. Again, we congratulate all employees on their anniversary within their department. I have received many compliments compliments on the following city employees for their work on the east side entrance to the city hall with the new ADA approach and new sidewalk improvement. Work had been performed by employees Frank Starr, Mike Koval, Dr. Zonia, Chad Hsu, and Jerry Bartlett. Also, many thanks from residents to Randy Bullock and Pat Norquist for installing bike racks around the city hall, which were requested by residents riding their bikes to the city hall. I'd also like to thank Public Works Superintendent Oris, whoever took care of that. Also, I'd like to ask the City Manager to announce his next time and date for the community meeting with residents at the Peter White Public Library. And also, kudos to the Fourth of July Committee volunteers, participants, and fireworks volunteers who worked so hard to make this such a great success, a job well done by everyone. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I'd like to just take a minute to talk about the charter review process that we're going through, just so people have a understanding of what's actually happened. I think some misinformation has been presented tonight as part of public comment, and it's, I'm not going to debate the person, but I think, just so the citizens of Marquette know what's going on, we've looked at this issue for a couple of years now. There are some things that could be done to make the City of Marquette more efficient, and we've talked about that and wondered what's the best way to go forward. We had a meeting several weeks ago, I guess, and decided to go ahead with this process. What we're doing is for the next approximately six weeks, having six outstanding citizens in the community take a look at our charter, see if they feel it's worthwhile going forward with the process to revise the charter. They'll come back to this board, this commission, and this commission will decide whether or not this issue goes on the ballot for citizens of Marquette to vote on. At that point, they would also vote to select the people who would serve on a charter commission. That's the way the process works. That would be our intention if we go forward with any kind of process. We're not going to change the charter in any way without a vote of the people. Even revisions to the charter, minor revisions, would have to be approved by the voters of Marquette. So we're just trying to make a process that makes sense so that we can get organized, and hopefully, if if the feeling is that it would make sense to revise the charter, the citizens will have a chance to vote on whether or not we go forward with with that process in November. And then subsequently, voters would have a chance to vote on whether or not they agree with whatever revisions or new charter is provided. Our charter was written back in the nineteen-fifties. A lot of things have changed since then. This seems like a reasonable process and a reasonable way to go through it. As I say, I'm especially happy that we were able to have ten outstanding citizens step forward and say, we'll we'll look at this process and give you our recommendation. Whether those people serve going forward or not will be up to the citizens of Marquette. That's the way the process works. If anybody has a different thought, appreciate it, but I believe that's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Stonehouse?
Just a couple of quick comments. I'd really like to give kudos, not only, obviously, to everybody connected with the Fourth of July and all the hard work they did, but particularly to the the men and women of the six hundred and fifty-second Bridge Company of U.S. Army Reserve in Harvey, because those were the folks that I think really stepped forward when a launching platform was needed for the fireworks, waterborne launching platform, something they did not have to do, but volunteered their time to put together a couple of bridge sections, bring them on down. And I think they proved, as the committee may itself, I think, has already recognized that to the Army Reserve Unit, really were critical spoke in in putting that whole package together. So certainly, kudos to the six fifty-second, and they've already done a couple deployments into the war zone, and depending on what goes on, may well be going back again. So again, my hat goes out to those those good folks. I would ask the administration, though, to to take a look at the buoys that we have set up between Picnic Rocks and McCarty's Cove with a view to, do we need to have all of them? And my particular concern would be twofold. First of all, they do present a very ragged appearance, and as people look at them, they're they're not very professionally looking, if that makes sense, the the way they were lined. But perhaps more importantly, I'm not sure that in the middle between Picnic Rocks and McCarty's is really a place where there's current danger. And I do know that a lot of folks historically have actually liked to swim there. By swimming, I mean in deep-water movement, not just bathing in shallow water. And I wonder if it would not make sense if we designated an area for folks actually to do that in an unguarded situation. I think that would be appreciated by many of the folks in town to have that opportunity. So again, I would ask administration, take a good look at it, see if we really need to have that whole area closed off, where we have an opportunity to allow more folks to to enjoy the water there. Other than that, Mr. Mayor, nothing further. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'm going to dovetail on a couple of Commissioner Ryan's comments regarding the Charter Review Committee. You did misspeak once, Don, when you said six people. It's really, we appointed ten tonight.
I thought I said ten.
Yeah. Originally, we're going to ask for nine. There isn't a solid number that that you need or are required to have, unlike one of our speakers talked about tonight. We had ten applicants that applied, and we thought it was fair. They were all very qualified applicants, so we appointed them all. These ten applicants will simply, as Commissioner Ryan said, review and see if a change or a modification or a redo of the charter is needed. If they feel it's not, they'll come back and report to us, and we probably won't carry it any further. If they feel that it's in the best interest of the city to go forward, then we'll do it exactly how we should. Our attorneys have researched this completely. It will go before the electorate, and they will vote as to whether or not they want it revised. And at that point, they will vote on a slate of candidates, which may or may not include all or any of this slate of ten. But at that point, then it's nine people required by the state then to make those revisions, and then again, go back to the voters with the change. So it is a lengthy process. It's been researched extensively, and it's being done the right way. Fourth of July, incredible, again, hats off to the Fourth of July Committee. Yorma's done a heck of a job, as always, selling wristbands, so thank you, Yorma. Exchange Club did a marvelous job down with the International Food Fest, as they always do. The parade was great. You know, the weather held out, it was just a marquee event for all of Marquette. Several of us commissioners had the opportunity this week, or last week, excuse me, to check out the new Coast Guard boat, and what an incredible piece of machinery that is, a two-million-dollar vessel that is self-righting, if it rolls over, it rolls right back. It's jet propulsion, twin, what, eight-hundred-and-forty-five-horse diesel engines? It's it's an incredible piece of equipment, so really remarkable when you think about the fact that a community as small as ours has one of the most advanced Coast Guard facilities in the nation, one of the most advanced smaller boats, and one of the best crews, so I couldn't be more pleased with that. City Manager, comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. First, I'd like to thank the Commission for the wonderful performance appraisal I received. I know with the limitations of everything we've discussed, I've echoed a number of comments, and I'm looking forward to working together to lay out what the performance objectives will be for the coming year, but I deeply appreciate your confidence and certainly your kindness in the remuneration. My family and I appreciate that, but I'd like to recognize that this is a symbiotic relationship, and a big reason why I have been able to accomplish many of the things we've talked about this evening isn't because it's a team of one, it's a team of many, and it's a symbiotic relationship with the Commission, and so I thank you for taking the risk you did with me last year, and I'll look forward, hopefully, to continuing to meet your expectations as we move forward. I'd also like to recognize staff. Again, these accomplishments don't come from one person alone, and I've received extraordinary support from a great staff that stands with any I've ever stood with in any of my life. And I've I've had a chance to tell them all that privately, but I want to reaffirm that again. The reason that you don't see a lot of me in meetings or in the rest of these things is because we have very, very capable people that I know the community has come to trust and to lean on, and I'm grateful that they've chosen to stay and and help me deliver on the expectations that you've set for me as well. So deeply appreciate all the kindness that that I've received here this evening. And again, my family and I appreciate all the kindness that the community's shown us. We've been here for a while. shown us. We've been here for a while. My family, I was the only one who, who ever really left and faced coming back. But I think, you know, my, my youngest son, Jason, maybe summed it up the most. I'd gotten a lot of feedback from an article that the Mining Journal had done, a spot interview, and what was the best thing that he can remember about any summer, and it was moving back to Marquette. And I have to echo that sentiment. That's absolutely how my family feels, and we love being here. We love this community, and we're glad, we're glad that's able to show a little bit. To Commissioner DePietro's question, the next community office hours are going to be at Peter White Public Library this Wednesday, July 13th, from 10 to 12. And I'll look forward to having a chat with anybody who comes up and wants to talk about Marquette. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, thank you. With that, we're adjourned.